Could you please start the introductory video?
Good evening, and thank you for joining us for the September 1st, 2020 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission. Let's begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin our meeting this evening, I wanted to share an invocation written by Reverend Amy Friedman, which was written to be shared during the Labor Day holidays. Labor Day weekend is not an ordinary time. As we do not rush headlong into our usual labors, the sacred is found not only in houses of worship, but in times set apart. Let us turn our attention to what is sacred in our daily living for the rewards of work and all those ancestors who boldly advocated for safety, fair wages, and better working conditions. We lift our hearts in gratitude. May this time of recreation energize us to bring forth an even more just and sustainable world. Thank you. All right, I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the code of ethics adopted by the board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the board at this meeting. All right, we come to the consent agenda. There are a couple of items to add to the agenda, which I'll mention in just a moment, but are there any questions about any item on the consent agenda from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have really a question per se to the consent agenda, but I would like to know why are some budget amendments in the consent agenda and some budget amendments are in the regular agenda? And what's the criteria to decide which one?
Ms. Pender, do you want to take that?
Yes, and Jennifer is here as well. Earlier this year, actually last fiscal year, the board made a decision at a certain dollar amount. I think it was $50,000. $250,000 would be consent, and anything above that would go on the regular agenda. But that was a board decision, sir.
All right, thank you.
I'd add to that that anytime a commissioner wants to pull something out of the consent agenda and have conversation, and we do it, you know, all the time, so if there's anything there that you would like to have more discussion, then it doesn't matter if it's $10,000 or, you know, $200,000, we pull it out. A lot of times, there's, you know, people will skim over the they won't pay that much attention to the consent agenda, and they should. And so sometimes it's good to pull it out and publicize it a little bit so that they know that some of these actions have been taken, so.
Sure, and if there's, in addition to asking questions, if there's any item that a person doesn't support, we can always also pull it out and have a separate vote on any item that's on the consent agenda. All right. There are a couple of items I wanted to ask if there's consensus to add to the agenda. One is to add at the end of the meeting appointments to the open seats on the TDA and the Civic Center. Commissioner Whitesides would also like to make a brief comment prior to the public comments, which we're going to start the public comments at 5:15 as we discuss that. So actually, let's do it after public comments, Al, if that's okay. Because we need to start that. Yes, we can also add early childhood to the boards as well, if y'all are ready to do that.
Are we ready to do that?
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay, okay. All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda, the consent agenda and the other items just referenced?
So move.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are now ready to take a public comment. I think we have a couple of folks who want to address the board. And my apologies for being a couple of minutes late. Mr. Joyner, the folks who are calling in, they're just on the phone, they can't. Can they see the meeting or?
They can see the meeting via Facebook, but they can't see it. It's just a live call. But they will be able to see the meeting via Facebook.
Okay, understood. Anything else you'd like to tell us about this new process for comment?
Well, can I also do that?
Okay, thank you. Do I need, is there anything else we need to do?
I think Matt could get prepared to.
Okay, okay.
It's not working in the room, so I'm just going to bring my phone up.
Okay, that's okay. I wasn't apologizing to you, Don. This might be the best way to do it.
Don't worry about apologizing.
Go ahead, Don, you got three minutes.
Okay. Okay, I've got three minutes, and y'all hearing me in there? You can wave at me, Brownie, if you are.
We can hear you great, Don.
You hear me, Brownie?
Yes, sir, yes.
Wave at me. I don't see anybody waving at me.
It's on a delay.
Go ahead, Don, you got three minutes.
Okay, all right, now we're started, all right. I've got three minutes, and y'all hearing me in there?
Don, can you mute your computer?
Okay, yeah, I will mute it now because I had it on to be sure they were doing it. Okay, they're waving. What I wanted to say, a couple of things. Number one, I had a gentleman give me this afternoon, he said, why can't we be in that room set six foot apart and not even wear my mask if it could be, because I'd like to see them eyeball to eyeball. So that is going on with people at the community. But I wanted to bring you up to date because sometimes having people in the audience that sees what you are saying can be beneficial. I have a very good friend of mine who's installing solar panels right now that have gone deep up in 20 years. They did not last 30 years. Also, while you all were talking, I was calculating the death rate on this horrible coronavirus. And based upon the population in Buncombe County, the death rate is .027. That's .0, folks, that's not even 1/10. And at the same time, in North Carolina, by the way, Brownie, we are worse than the state because we are .001% higher than the state. The state is .026%. So that is some important information needs to be put out. And when you talk about all the people that were positive, I'd like to know how many false negative positives were in that. So sometimes it helps to have people there in the audience while you're doing it. And I hope that this is not going to be an attempt to keep people at home and keep them out of your hair so you won't have to look at us. I know somebody don't like looking at me, but that's okay. And I appreciate the opportunity for you to hear it in my voice because when you hear my voice, I hope somebody thinks about what I look. And especially on the other side over there, Al, how you doing? Be good, take care, and you got a wonderful job to do. Hang in there, bye.
All right, thank you very much. It's good to hear from you.
That was it?
All right, we've got, I believe we've got one other caller as well.
They never called.
Oh, they never called. Okay, so we don't have any other folks scheduled to call?
Yeah, so part of this deal gives the audience and commissioners the process, part of the process is they have to register before the meeting.
Yep.
They leave their number, and Max actually calls them. The number, that number has to be registered. He doesn't call them, but they have to log in.
Sorry, they probably ought to hear you saying that. Can they hear you say that? If not, they need to. You need to go back and start over, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So the process is citizens need to sign up prior to the meeting from 5:00 PM on Wednesday before the meeting up until Monday at 3:00 PM. They can sign up. It's a virtual sign up as well. And once they sign up, they will get a number that they will actually use, and they will log into Zoom, and Max will see this number, and they have to call into that number. And they have to use the same number because we have to kind of identify who's calling in. And that way, Max will see who's already on the line in order to let them come into the public comment. And that information, when they sign up, that information is given in the form of email to them. They leave their email address as well. If somebody cannot have the ability to register themselves, they can call into the clerk's office, and myself or Stacy can register them as well. So it's important for the citizens to actually register and to be available at the time of public comment as well. So, any questions with that?
I don't think so. Thank you for explaining that, and we do we do encourage people for our upcoming meetings to, if they want to speak to the board directly, to use that process so that you can, although you will not be physically in the room with us, you can directly talk to all the members of the county commission, and it will be broadcast along with the overall meeting on our government access channel. All right. Thank you. So the next item is, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Whitesides who wanted to make a brief comment.
Yeah, it will be brief. And I've given a copy to Lamar, too. I want to have this statement put in the minutes to clear up any misunderstanding of my remarks during the discussion on reparations in the August 4th, 2020 meeting. I have never considered myself a racist. For over 60 years, I have fought for equality and inclusion for everyone, not only in this community, but also Atlanta, Georgia, and Durham, North Carolina, when I was a student in college. To be a racist is a choice. My point may have been misconstrued when I used myself as an example to say that anyone could be a racist if that is the unfortunate choice he or she makes. My actions and dedication to racial equality and justice for all proves that I am not a racist and have never chosen to be one. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Whitesides. Appreciate you sharing that. You know, folks who have asked me about that, I've said, did you listen to everything Commissioner Whitesides said? If there's any person in this community who has demonstrated their commitment to ending racism, it's you. So thank you for, but thank you for, thank you for sharing that. All right. Commissioners, we now come to our public hearing on the issuance of limited obligation bonds for the county's solar projects. Don Warren will present this item, and then we'll hold, oh, but before we do that, I'm sorry. We do have a process item we need to consider. Michael Free, could you briefly speak to it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Commissioner Beach Farah has to be excused from the rest of the meeting, so because we have our session law for remote meetings, if she participates remotely, then we'd have to add 24 hours to this public hearing and figure out a way to have that vote done again later without messing up the timeline that Don's about to announce. Also, we don't want her to be counted as present from leaving the meeting without an excuse, so we just ask the board for a motion and a second and a vote to excuse her from the meeting.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion to excuse Commissioner Beach Farah from the meeting?
A second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you, Mr. Free. Mr. Warren?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so we're bless you. Bless. We are here to, or I'm here, to ask for your approval to hold a public hearing tonight on the 2020 C lobs. And then also I'm asking for approval of the initial resolution, which is the first resolution we have to do for issuance of the 2020 C lobs. Background on this, this is for the solar project that you all approved. We have received the bids on the solar project, and they came in at about 10.4 million. We have the resolution set up so that it is a not to exceed of 10.8 million, just to give us a little cushion in case something happens during negotiations and that sort of thing. We did an RFP for banking, for private, for private placement, and then they will be issued in the form of lobs. We received six responses. We evaluated them. We have made a decision on who we will recommend, which is Truist Bank. We will also recommend that we are doing a 15-year as opposed to a 20-year, and that'll save us about $1 million in interest over those five years. The interest rate that we will be getting was two getting old. I didn't bring my glasses. Around 2%. Wow. Sorry. So this debt will be issued. We will come back in two weeks with the approving resolution, which is another formality in this. We will go to the LGC in October and get, hopefully get approval from them, which we've already had an initial conversation, and they are okay with this format and what we're doing. So everything should go fairly smoothly. Then we will close whenever we're ready to start doing the work and that sort of thing. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on the actual financing or the banks or anything like that, if you have any questions.
Mr. Warren, you said, you said 10.8 million.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, but this says 10.5.
The resolution should be not to exceed, it should be 10.8.
The county tends to issue private placement in the form of, in the approximate amount of 10.8 million. Or 10.5 million is what I'm reading.
Yeah, that's
That's not the resolution.
That's not the resolution. That's just my cover.
Oh, well, the resolution said, okay.
That's the approximate amount that we anticipate issuing, but in the resolution, we're having not to exceed of 10.8.
Okay, sir, I'm sorry.
We just have a little contingency built in there, so if it came back and it was 10.6, I don't have to come back and do this again.
Okay.
So this requires a motion?
Yeah, you need to have a public hearing first. Yeah. And then we need to do an approval of the resolution.
So I just want to comment on the fact that you're doing 15-year financing instead of 20. It's saving us, you know, a million dollars, and you know, before, you know, 20 years was a default button that was pushed, you know, pretty much all the time, so I appreciate you, you doing that.
Sure. Trying to do the best thing for the county.
Yes, sir.
You know, the I'm obviously supportive of this. Might surprise anybody.
Yeah, we wanted
You know, we can borrow money at 2%, though. I mean, it's like, I just want to say, I think this is great. I'm all for it.
Well, and if
You know, it is, it is a testimony to the strength of this county's fiscal strength and creditworthiness that we can access capital for projects at this extremely low rate. I mean, rates are low in general right now, we know that, but it's great, and so I think this is great. If we did stretch it out longer, I mean, the flip side of that is that we would save even more money in the earlier years, right, because the debt service payments would be lower, and therefore the energy savings would be even greater. So there's just, you know, there's a trade off there, but this is a great solution, so I'm super supportive of it.
True, and if I could add, if you take into account the rebates that Jeremiah is going to be going out for from Duke, those are 2.4 million. Our interest that we anticipate paying over 15 years is only 1.65 million, so we're actually borrowing money, but it's going to cost us less than the par amount, so.
That's great.
That's good.
Great job, Don. All right, we need to have a public hearing, so let's do that. And then we'll consider the resolution. So I'll open the public hearing at 5:41. Do we have any members of the public who wish to speak? They could be scheduled to call for this, I believe. Mr. Joyner, is anyone scheduled to speak? Okay, are there any members public who wish to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll adjourn the public hearing at 5:42. And is there a motion on the resolution?
I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you, Mr. Warren.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right, we come to the county manager's report. Ms. Pender, do you have any items you need to report on? All right, very good. We do not have any old business items. Under new business, first up is the Schedule of Values for the 2021 reappraisal, and Keith Miller's going to present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So we've worked through the process. This is probably the third or maybe the fourth time I've been here working through the process of the Schedule of Values for the reappraisal. What I'm asking for tonight, or this afternoon, Mr. Chairman, is that the board adopt the Schedule of Values as they were presented to you to be used in the 2021 reappraisal. And upon that adoption, instruct the staff to advertise that once a week for four consecutive weeks, which opens up the appeal process for the citizens in the county to be able to question those and come and discuss that with me if they would like, so. Tonight, I need, I'm asking for you to adopt the Schedule of Values.
Comment, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can I, could you explain to the public the appeals process as best you can?
Yes, so the Schedule of Values are open in my office for anyone to come in as a public to inspect those. If they find anything in that schedule in which they feel to not be valid or related to market value in any way, then they can present an appeal to me, and we will work through that with them. That's kind of how we've done it in the past. So anything that's not resolved here then can be taken to the Property Tax Commission in Raleigh, and they will take the subject up there and make a ruling on it. But the schedule is open, Commissioner Belcher, for anyone that would like to inspect it. They just need to come by and see me, and I'd be happy to work through it with them.
So would you give a layperson out there listening what Schedule of Values means?
Yes, so the schedule really sets forth the rules, the standards, methodology of the reappraisal. So what that means sort of is that all the, let's say, rates, we'll talk about rates. If you build a new garage at your home, then that Schedule of Values is going to tell you what the rate would be that we can apply to that garage for this upcoming reappraisal. So it's going to set forth the cost in the market to build a house, to build a commercial building, whatever it might be. If you're adding an air conditioner to your house, it's going to tell you how much then we can assess you on a cost basis for that air conditioner. And we cannot deviate from that till the next reappraisal is scheduled. Does that help, Commissioner?
It's not for me, it's for those calling me, so.
Oh, no, and I understand. And let me, let me say again for the citizens that may be listening in concern, I welcome them to come, and I will have a very, very open conversation with them. I'll show them the Schedule of Values. I can explain to them in a little more detail what that might be, and I'm open to that for any citizen that wants to know more about it. I'm happy to do that.
So I'm going to make one more comment, and I'm going to hush, but I want to make sure that the public understands what we're doing because I have had some pushback, some other commissioners have. We've had some phone calls where people said, well, you know, why are you going up on my taxes? Why are you going up on my taxes? Well, that's not, this is simply, I remember eight years ago, the first year I was a commissioner, I came in and we had not done a revale for eight years. And there was a significant, it was very difficult to deal with. So we're doing it, you know, and we're, we've agreed to do it in four years, and it simply means that next, next year, based on the value of the properties and based on the revenue that's coming in, a decision will be made at that time. There is no tax increase associated with this whatsoever. It is just simply a Schedule of Values, and the methodology or the method or the way that value is, is, will be calculated. You know, and that's, that's, that's all it is, and if, if the media is reporting anything different, it is not accurate. It is not, it is not true. And whatever that headline may or may not be, this has nothing to do with the tax increase. And, and I, as a commissioner and this board, are not raising taxes on anyone in Buncombe County, period. That's not what this is.
So, thank you, Commissioner Belcher, and I'll expand upon that a little bit if I can have just a moment to say. I really, we need to keep in mind that reappraisal is about equalization. Okay, that's reappraisal. And what equalization means to the citizens is to assure every citizen that pays taxes in this county that they are not paying any more than their fair share compared to any other citizen in the county. But what happens is that as we go along in the reappraisal process and we get further and further out, the market changes differently in different areas of the county. So you may be able to go east and you see a percentage that were at 80%, you may be able to go west and weren't 90%. But what that does then and brings all those values back in line with the market to again assure the citizen that they're only paying their fair share. So reappraisal, I'll say, I'll say all the time, is that reappraisal is a good thing, okay? And it is not about taxes, okay? And when I have people say the same thing to me, is that, oh, you're just, you're just wanting to raise our taxes, that absolutely has nothing to do with reappraisal. When I'm looking at values and I'm doing reappraisal, I have no idea what anybody's tax bill is. I do not use any formulas to see how much anybody's tax bills are going to be, because we do not make decisions based on taxes. That decision is for this board. When I set the values and I come back later in the year of 2021 and say, this is what the taxable value is, this board needs to decide what the budget is, and then you arrive at a rate. So reappraisal has nothing to do with anybody's taxes going up. And again, I'll say to the citizen and you say to your, to your people who are calling you to, please call me and come and see me, and I'll be happy to sit down with them and show them exactly what the process is and what all that means in a little more detail when we have a little more time, so I welcome that to anybody.
All right, is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the Schedule of Values for the 2021 reappraisal.
Okay, and we'll do, can we also, should we do a separate motion on directing the staff to publish the legal notice?
I'm, I'm not sure you need a motion for the legal notice. It's just, once it's adopted, we will, I'm just saying, if you would please instruct the staff to advertise that. That's a matter of information to you two.
Okay, all right, very good. There's a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Mr. Miller.
Commissioners, before you move on, I do want to give Keith a shout out because he has been hosting some town halls that citizens can listen into and get the information he's saying. If they don't feel comfortable coming out, they can listen to those town halls as well.
Oh, good.
Very good. Thank you for doing that. All right, next we have several budget amendments that Jennifer Barnett is going to help us with. The first one is regarding the CARES and HAVA grants.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So yes, the first budget amendment for this evening is for the general fund. Election Services has been awarded two funding streams that total $355,592 for use in support of conducting this year's general election. Coronavirus relief funds total $183,483 and is eligible to cover similar items as our prior CRF funding, such as to support social distancing during the election process, PPE, increased staffing for additional cleaning and sanitization at PPE, increased staffing for additional cleaning and sanitization at the polls, additional internet connecting, connectivity for, to move to larger early voting sites. The Help America Vote Fund is a reimbursement basis, up to a max of $250,000 on a first come, first served basis. Potential eligible expenditures will be equipment purchase of printers to add more curbside voting options, staffing also as it relates to increased curbside locations, absentee ballot mailing supplies, Plexiglas shields for early voting. Those are some of the examples that those funding dollars are eligible to be spent and reimbursed for. I'll also just note that our elections director, Corinne, is here and available for any additional questions or concerns. So, we would just like to establish the budget for these two potential funding sources, two election services in the general fund.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions or is there a motion to support the proposed budget amendment?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Need further comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next up.
Yes, so the second budget amendment request is also for the general fund. Buncombe County Health and Human Services has received additional funding in the total amount of $366,415 from the Department of Public Health. The agreement addendum references specifically for enhancing detection activities, and it's from the Communicable Disease Branch to carry out COVID-related surveillance, epidemiology, laboratory capacity, infection control, mitigation communications, and other preparedness and response activities. The plan is public health will utilize this funding for 10 temporary employees, nine nurses and one administrative assistant to work for a six-month period, seven full-time, two part-time, for a total of eight FTEs. And again, this is temporary staffing. So, ordinarily, we would come to you and request for a grant-related position, but temp staffing, it's within the personal ordinance for our ability to do that. But just wanted to give you the information on the formation of that team. So, it would be for this nurse team to address COVID community spread.
Is there a motion to approve the budget amendment for COVID-19 nurse team funding?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and finally, the budget amendments for the school, public school ADM capital projects from lottery project funds for Asheville Primary School.
Yes. So, as the chairman referenced, this is a request for a budget amendment to our public school ADM, which is Average Daily Membership Capital Fund. Asheville City Schools has been awarded through the North Carolina Education Lottery Funding an amount of $315,599 for the remediation and renovation and construction of new office spaces at the Asheville Primary School. So, the state has already approved the funding and this is to establish the project and the budget in that total.
So, I'm going to make a comment and then I'm going to make a motion to approve. We had discussion earlier about the, the quality of the inside of our buildings and this is an example where the, where the state stepped up and taking care of a local school and I appreciate it. So, I have the opportunity to make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much, Jennifer Barnett. Appreciate you. All right, that completes our new business. We now come to our board appointments and...
Chairman, I think that, is that clock wrong? Is that clock wrong over there?
Nope, we're going to, we're going to get this meeting done in very efficient, possibly record time. All right, we have one applicant, we have one position open on the Tourism Development Authority and one applicant.
I move approval for Brenda Durden.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? For the Civic Center, we have just one vacancy. There's three applicants. So...
And poll the board?
I think we should just poll the board. I think that's probably the best way to do it. So, let's start over on Amanda's side.
Shay Brown.
Shay Brown.
Shay Brown.
Shay Brown.
Shay Brown.
Shay Brown. All right. I think Shay Brown has carried the, carried the election easily.
So, thank you to her and the other applicants for the Civic Center Commission. All right, and finally, we have the Early Childhood Education Subcommittee. Who would like to talk to us about the applicants for that? Because the Subcommittee's done interviews.
I'll do it. It's on the, yeah, you got it.
Oh, sorry.
But I'll go over. I'd like to point out that this is the first and last time you received them this way from our Subcommittee because it changed. And we got, we didn't quite get our dots together because we, at the same time that we passed at the last meeting where we interviewed from the board, the funding committees, we had did hours before where we set up the Subcommittee to interview them. And what we're bringing forward now, all of these, we had 10 applicants. They were excellent. We narrowed it down, the Subcommittee, which was made up of me, Leslie Anderson, and Rick Johnson, we narrowed it down to four. And it was one retiree and one community person. And the two names, and by the way, all were approved by our board today in the meeting to bring to us. And the two names that we're bringing forward is for the community person, Brandy Bowman, who works in the Community Engagement Department at UNC Asheville. She will be an excellent addition to our Early Childhood Board. And for the retiree, it's Wendy Weber, who worked in, she worked in, with the people from disabilities. It was out of Morganton with, I think it was hearing, you know, and she's good. She will be an excellent addition because of her previous, you know, job, what she did. So, we had, it's two who will be excellent additions to our Early Childhood Board.
Could you read those names one more time?
Brandy Bowman and Wendy Weber, W E I B E R.
I'll make a motion to approve those two.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Commissioner Whitesides. All right, we have just a couple of announcements. Yes, sir.
You need to get a, you need to get the mic.
I just wanted to alert the board that I also put the Act of Boards and Commission that was discussed at the last meeting, where we changed a couple of the boards and commissions to a different category. We moved four boards to what is now the funding advisory category. So, you should have that. I sent that out last week, but you should also have that in your packet. And those were boards that the, the commission decided that needed to be moved from the advisory category because they had funding responsibilities. So, just wanted to make that clear.
So, do we want to add that to the next meeting so we approve it?
It, it was actually approved. Y'all did vote on it at the last meeting. It was a motion that it was done and I just wanted to see, you to see that that sheet was updated.
Thank you.
So, can we put that out for the, put it on the website for the public to see it? Thanks.
The next meeting of the Buncombe County Commission will be on September 15th at 3:00 PM. That'll be the Commissioners' Briefing Meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. Later that day at 5:00 PM, September 15th, the Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting at 5 o'clock at 200 College Street, Room 326. So, yeah, this is one of the shorter meetings we've had. If I had gotten our meeting started on time, again, I apologize for that. I was literally looking at a clock that was wrong and didn't realize it had gotten after 5:00. So, apologies for that. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, please say aye. All right, we're adjourned.